In the forty's salary increase. Now, I guess we last commission meeting, what we tabled, did we take?
Uh, yeah, the commission tabled it. Um, for purposes of finding out the impact on the budget, so, okay.
So, we didn't come up with no kind of?
No, I, I can, so when I go through the budget, I can show you those, those raises are accounted for in this budget.
In the budget, okay.
Yeah.
So it'll just be on the, come up for another vote at the next commission meeting?
Cool, yeah, it'll come up based on, again, what we talked about here in this, in this budget. Alright.
Alright.
Okay, so, I gotta cut lights off now.
Um, it's.
Unless you want to ju- we can do it without, I don't need the lights off. Um, what I'm gonna do, I'm gonna do a PowerPoint presentation quickly. Go through that and then I can go into actually the document that will be submitted for the approval by the city commission.
Okay.
I'm gonna turn this on first, okay, there we go. Okay. So, go ahead. Uh, Commissioner, you need to announce that the budget hearing, the public hearing for the budget.
A public bu- I think the public budget hearing is over.
Okay. Uh, public hearing is for the purpose of presenting the city of Ben Harper's per- proposed budget for twenty nineteen, twenty twenty fiscal year during this hearing. Various funds of the city will be presented and their respective revenues and expenditures additionally justification and explanation. Will be given regarding adjustment to the various funds upon completion of the budget. There'll be public comment taken in relation to the various components of the overall budget. The proposed twenty nineteen, twenty twenty fiscal year budget anticipates operating revenues fifteen million seventy nine thousand eight hundred thirty two dollars. And expenditures of fifteen million fifteen thousand three hundred seventy dollars inclusive of all funds. City's budget funds are general fund, major local streets, permanent public improvement fund, community development block grant fund. Pension taxation fund and utility services fund. So fiscal year budget. The general fund budget is a budget that, this is the fund that accounts for all transaction of governmental unit which are not accounted for in any other fund. General fund is used to account for the ordinary operation of governmental unit that are financed from taxes and other general revenue. Is the only fund that all governments have. Anticipated operating revenue and expenses for general fund are eight million one hundred ninety five thousand eight hundred thirty seven dollars. And eight million one hundred seventy nine thousand nineteen dollars for expenditures. So, on this, what you see in front of you is actually in the document, is in this document. Okay? When I sent this document out, the one that, that everyone got.
Right.
There was some tweaking that had to go on.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so what I'm gonna do is I can identify what the tweaks were to it.
Okay.
And why they happened. So the first one, like I said, is the general fund, um, revenues. The first thing that, if you look under income tax.
Okay.
On the old, the original sheet, it was at one million forty nine thousand seven hundred nineteen dollars. We anticipate that that number will be one million two hundred forty nine thousand six hundred and sixty five dollars. What we did was we looked at what our refunds were and we were actually holding back about thirty percent in anticipation. That there may be some issues or something that may go wrong. We're looking at those numbers, those numbers are going down significantly. So we are anticipating about a fifteen percent, uh, holdback on income tax monies that come in. So that now we can increase this budget, this line item by about two hundred thousand dollars. The second thing that is on here that is not, that has changed, I should say, is in the. There is at the bottom where it says transfers to other funds in the expenditures. Three hundred thousand dollars is there. What that accounts for is we anticipate, um, for this fiscal year that we would do approximately third, about three hundred thousand dollars. In, um, activities related to the income tax, street work, sidewalks and alleys. So that three hundred thousand dollars has to be transferred to the major local street fund. Because we have to account for it through that, that fund. So we're transferring in there, but then the activities will come out of there and be accounted for. The other thing that is changed on this one is the parks and recreation. So on the original one, it was. One hundred sixteen thousand dollars, one sixteen eight sixty two. It is up to one fifty six three sixty two. That is because we have to take care of our parks this year and that accounts for employees. For, for en- hiring of employees to take just care of, take care of parks. Maintenance upkeep, um, any trash removal, uh, basic maintenance around it. That's four people, that's the supervisor and three workers. Okay? So those are, that's the only, those are the only differences in the budget that was, that the, the document that was submitted initially. And what we are submitting for, uh, approval on Monday. Major local street funds are what they are, it is the bu- it's a major local street system established by Act fifty one designated by municipalities governing body. Subject to the approval of the state transportation commission. City's major streets are chosen according to their importance to the municipality. All the streets are the city or villages' local streets. These street systems include no county roads or state trunk lines. So main street is not a part of our overall cities, city street structure. Cities and villages may use their funds on major local streets provided the first priority shall be the major street system. The anticipated operating revenues and expenditures for major streets is one million one hundred dollars. Uh, and the revenues and expenditures and the anticipated oper- operating revenue and expenses for local streets is six hundred thirty thousand dollars respectively. Um, on the original document, again, you had. Uh, major local streets, there we go. Originally, it was anticipated that we would get nine hundred eighty thousand dollars. And what we found out was that, one, that calculation, we had a calculation, uh, given to us by the MTF. Michigan Transportation Fund, so we got a little bump due to the, the, the increase in the, uh, gas taxes. And additionally, this accounts for forty percent of that three hundred thousand dollars. Is added in this docu- into, into this fund to do major street work. Okay, so a hundred and twenty thousand of that, uh, three hundred thousand is in this, is going into this fund. Now, where it wasn't before. So it's, so now you see that it's a million one. Again, that in, is inclusive of money that comes in as well as the increase in allocation from the state of Michigan. So that's the difference.
This is work that we'll be doing.
Correct. That is work that we'll be doing on the street system. Based on the plan that the commission approves, is actually gonna come to your committee in June. Alright. The one for local streets originally had it at four hundred fifty thousand dollars. What increased it to six hundred thirty thousand is. Okay, what increased it to six thirty is the hundred and eighty thousand dollars that we anticipate we're gonna do work on local streets. From the income tax fund. Permanent public improvement, um, funds are exclusively for the acquisition, construction, completion of permanent public improvements of real property. Replacement or reconstruction of public facilities and other improvements of a permanent character. Repair or maintenance expenditures cannot be made from PPI funds. Revenue for the PPI fund is derived primarily from a village assessment. Anticipate operating revenues and expenses for a PPI fund, that's not correct, is one hundred sixty eight thousand three hundred nine dollars. There's an extra nine there, it's not nine million dollars.
Can you give me some examples of something we can do in permanent with this fund?
So what we did, I, I'll give you an example of what we've done. One of the things that we did with this fund is actually we remodeled the public safety, correct. Um, we did the remodeling of the fire dorm. That came from pub- permanent public improvement. So we can do that, but again, if it was say, uh, maintenance on the roads, we couldn't do that. We could not do that with this fund.
Put a water fountain in your job with park.
If it's a permanent structure, yes, that could, that could be done. Yes. So, as I said, it's anticipate a hundred sixty eight thousand dollars, one sixty eight. I got them out of order, sorry about that. One sixty eight three oh nine is what we anticipated dollar amount. And again, this is derived strictly from the village that's levied on, uh, on residents and they paid, that's where we get this money from. Okay? Pension taxation fund. So what this is, is, uh, the citizens in nineteen fifty four voted a millage. To help with the retirement for public safety officials, police and fire. The pension taxation fund was established in twenty thirteen as a result because the city moved to MERS. And now we were no longer facilitating the pension ourselves. So what we end up doing was, it's really just a clearinghouse. We collect the money from the taxes, it goes through the pension taxation fund, it's, let us know that we've done it. And then it gets transferred to MERS to be paid toward the P- police and fire pension. So that anticipated dollar amount is seventy three thousand nine hundred fourteen dollars. So then they're at seven hundred, I mean seventy three thousand nine hundred fourteen dollars. Yeah. Okay. Community development block grant fund, um, is entitlement money that we get from HUD. Uh, it provides grants to cities, counties and states to develop strong communities by providing decent housing, a suitable living environment. And expanding economic opportunities principally for low and moderate income persons. CDBG eligible activities are initiated and developed at the state and local level based upon a community's needs, priorities and benefits. The operating revenues and expenses for CDBG fund are four hundred twenty one thousand, four hundred six dollars and four hundred twenty thousand. Uh, four hundred seventy seven dollars for the expenditures. We, we, we received a reduction of about fifteen thousand dollars in this fund, this year. So HUD dropped us down fifteen thousand dollars.
We did make our time.
Correct, we made the timeliness, we've been given information that we're gonna get this money for, um, this coming fiscal year. And then also, some of the, some of the tasks that were left over will continue to go. But this will be new money that we'll have an annual action plan, uh, put together by the commission with city input. I think, um, Miss, Miss Tracy Jennings has asked for June the tenth or the thirteenth, I don't know exactly what day it is. For the public hearing, the first one, then there's a subsequent one on the fourth Wednesday of the month in July. So there's a thirty day gap between the two. And that will be the time that we will present the annual action plan as well as, uh, get public input, commission input. And then it will come back to vote in August.
Do we get any, uh, feedback from that summer job?
We have not, we have not, HUD has not responded to us yet, Miss Jennings has been in contact with Miss Bagley. And we're just waiting on her to let us know what we can do with that.
No funds, uh, is the ones that's left out of it, I think it was six hundred something thousand?
It was, it was actually a million dollars, it was a million dollars that we had, uh, it was a million five. And we had to spend a certain amount of, we had to spend eight hundred dollars, so there was six hundred left. So that would be out of that allocation, yeah, yeah.
How soon you think the, this, you know?
Probably, probably first part of June, cuz they're going through a lot, right now they're getting geared up for their annual monitoring. And compliance stuff, so they're getting hit with having scheduled holes, so she said probably first part of June, then we'll know something.
You anticipate any problems?
I've not gotten any indication that there's gonna be any issues, but again, I, again, I gotta wait, we gotta wait for that, yeah. So basically, like I said, we're gonna get four twenty one, four oh six, uh, anticipated, uh, expenditures are four twenty four seventy seven. Um, so that will be for community development. Uh, last one is utility services fund and that's an enterprise fund. Enterprise fund establishes a separate accounting and financial reporting mechanism for municipal services for which a fee is charged in exchange for goods or services. The anticipated operating revenue and expenditures for utility services fund are four million four hundred ninety thousand three hundred sixty six dollars. And the, uh, expenses are four million four hundred forty three dollars, four, I'm sorry, four million four hundred forty three thousand six hundred fifty one dollars. And if you look on that page, there's delineation of how the monies will be allocated in that fund.
Do we get those lift stations repaired already?
Yeah, water street was a big one, um, the other issue that what we're working on right now is an I and I study. Which is intrusion and infiltration because, um, we know now that there is, we've gotta have some. Cuz our pump stations, lift stations are working, uh, a lot because of the fact that we've gotten heavy rains. So, we're looking, working on a, a way to find out if we can do, um, monitoring to see where it's coming in at. And see what that is coming from, so they don't have to attenuate to that and address it.
Look at that page five. Storm drain.
Mm-hmm.
expenditures, okay, uh. We're expecting to spend what, twenty six thousand five eleven?
Correct.
Okay, when we say the storm drain through. What is that?
So we are, we are mandated by the state of Michigan to maintain and updo- upgrades on our storm sewer system. The challenge that we have is that there is no funding mechanism for it. You can't assess, like you can with water sewer, you can assess, you, you provide the service, you assess a fee to it. State will not allow you to assess a fee to storm drains, but they mandate that you keep them in good repair. So, we are anticipating about twenty six thousand dollars, that's just maintenance on them. What we're looking at in that, um, the, the plan that we had with the DWRF SRF. Is to do the upgrades and replacement on bad storm sewers that we have. That was a part of the Saw Grant, so that's why we ask for that money through that mechanism. Because to do it out of our, out of, out of the budget would basically take the entirety of the budget.
So, the, uh, like at the corners, uh, the intersections, the little.
Mm-hmm.
That's what we call them.
That's storm drains, those are storm drains, the graded ones that are in the curb, those are the storm drains, the ones that are in the street typically are sanitary.
So, what we gonna, is that money in there to like to blow them out, get them blowed out?
It, it pays the cost of doing that at, those activities, yes.
We do all that in house?
Yes, yeah, we do that in house.
I'd like to ask a question if. I just ask a question if do all the, uh, replacements, storm drains have been replaced that were missing?
No, and what we have is probably fifteen different storm drain grates. And what it's gonna entail, some of them we can get off the shelf, some of them we have to have manufactured specifically for them. So we're trying to find someone who can mass produce them and it's kinda hard because that then drives the cost up. Versus being able to go to East Jordan and get a storm grade off of the, um, off the shelf. So, while we're trying to do that, part of what we're asking for in DWRF SRF was to do that. Because it's a very high expense on what we have to have done for those.
How many more do we have to be replaced?
I have to get you that number, but it's, it's a lot of, it is.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Did we, I think we did study some.
We did.
When, and was, were they gonna do something that would, like a retrofit, so you could get one size?
We, we tried, we did do some on the retrofit, but what you have, you have storm grades that are from twenty four inches down to fourteen. And there, we, if you did a one sized at all, you would have to do modifications to all the storm grades that didn't fit that. So, what we're trying to do is say, okay, we have these many of these sizes that are abnormal. If you can give us a good price on them, we'll get that to you and working with cat people who cast, who do metal casting to get that done. So that's what we're trying to do, the ones that we can buy off the shelf, we've, we've gotten those. It's the other ones that are those abnormal sizes, and if we can't find anybody, then we have to look at retrofitting them and putting in new ones. Wherever they're, they're, the smaller ones are, or the larger ones are, because like I said, the standard is about twenty inches. Actually, we got twenty four to fourteen.
On the operating expenditures, did you explain customer service?
So, all of the activities in the, in the, um. In the utility services fund are allocated to, excuse me, a different, uh, category. So if you look on here, you've got the administration part of it. Customer service, debt service, water treatment, water distribution, sewer lift station, storm drains, total, uh, operating expenses. So in that document that I provided to the commission, if you go into that one. I, if I get to it, let me get to it real quick. Just utility services, so water, distribution, sewer. Utility admin. Okay, so if you look on page, what is? Yeah, on page thirty four. There are, there are, excuse me, there are salaries, there are fringes, there are supplies. There are professional services and the expenditures, other expenditures, communication, postage, traveling training. All that comprises the customer service. So what happens is, you have people who do several different jobs that get allocated against different line items. So a portion gets allocated against administration, some gets allocated against customer service. So that's why you see the differentiation of those line items, Commissioner.
Chair. Is it possible for us to get? A detailed report of what employee is listed under administration? And what employee is listed on, or being paid on the customer service?
Uh, that's, that's, that's fine, yeah, I, I can do that.
You're done?
Yeah.
Thank you, Chair.
We, uh, allocate some money for communication?
Communications money is allocated in, under the general administration portion.
How much do we?
We typically put about five to seven thousand dollars in there, yeah.
Chair, we need more. We, we need more.
For?
We, we have, we have five thousand in there, we only spent about three, four hundred.
So that roll over?
So, it doesn't roll off from year to year, every year starts anew, it starts fresh, absolutely.
Then we definitely need more because we're just ready to do upgrade our communication. And Clark understands that.
How much of that five thousand did we spend last year?
A couple, three, four hundred, so what, what we've done, under, under our, under the general administration. Because that funds, that actually funds activities that benefit the entire city. So what we do is, when we do network upgrades, when we do upgrades to our IT. That all falls under there, under professional services. Because again, it's not benefiting a specific person or specific department, it's benefiting the entire city. So that's why you see a general admin budget that's higher, because instead of saying, we're paying all. Instead of allocating dollars toward, how much money does five employees pay in say, public works department? Three employees in the, uh, clerk's office. We lump it together, for example, for pension, if you look at the, that's why I gave this document to you. The, if you look under the general admin. And I have to get to that. Which one is this one, that's too, too? No, it's not, that was in the, it's in the other one that was provided. So, let me get to that page, that's, that was, this. Okay, so on page nineteen of that, of the document that I believe Mrs. Oster has given to you. You see the entirety of a lot of things that go on with every, every department.
Right.
So, office supplies, operating supplies, professional services, communications. So if you look under communications, there is an allocation of ninety nine thousand twenty four dollars. So there, that's built into that part of it. So it's not a separate delineation of communications for, uh, TVs or communicate, it's communications in its totality.
And that's part of the commit, the committee too, right?
That's part, yes sir, yes sir.
Which we had had, the committee had five thousand dollars.
It, and, and like I said, there is no problem with getting more dollars for it if it doesn't go way to the left. But there has to be some justification for it. You know, if you're saying you wanna spend, uh, a million dollars to make the city completely fiber. Well, that's probably gonna be a hard sell to do, understanding that the dollars that we have, um, available in, in the budget. So what I gave you again, this document, so that you can see line item for line item. That this is what the allocations go toward. So the summary, which is what this document is, is basically the summation of all these pieces of paper. Basically rolled into one, rolled into about ten of them.
So Chair. I need the process, um, I guess when we come up with a project in communication, we go to city manager and say. Well, this is what we need, i- i- is that the process?
It's the process, same process we do for every, every, uh, requisition in the city, Commissioner. If there's a request to do, for example, uh, whatever it may be. Then if it, if it is something that I can approve, I can approve it. If it's something that the, that exceeds what I can, I can, I have authority to do. Then the committee would have to make that recommendation and then it would go to the commission, who would then ultimately have to approve it.
Thank you.
Okay. Are there any other questions on the budgets in there that, that we have?
I missed it, uh, public works.
Mm-hmm.
The difference between. Uh, this current year and then the next year, is it more money or?
So, in the public works, if you go back, it's under the general fund. Special taxation. So, public works, public works is actually funded in two places. It's one here, that's nine hundred and sixty six thousand dollars for, out of the general fund budget. But then subsequently is funded out of major local streets. So, we have gotten an increase in dollars in major local streets. So now we can actually do more activities in there and, and basically employ a couple more part-time people in this, in this, under here. So, we're increasing it, but again, we can't get, we can't say double, double the staff. Yeah, we have to take small steps to do it. Yeah, we have to take small steps to do it. Uh, this anticipates about a sixteen thousand dollar difference in revenue and expenditures. So, yeah. And like I said, unless there's some more questions about budget particular, I can go into the millage, which is really kind of quick and easy. Are there any?
Questions?
I have one question. Man, it's about the five thousand dollars for, you were speaking earlier, about five thousand dollars, the three hundred dollars was spent out of it for communication. What was the three hundred dollars in there?
I would have to pull those, that actual, I don't have the expenditures for this year. Um, one was to purchase equipment that's over there, uh, and like I said, I would have to get the actual expenditures for this year. If you want to, we can do that at the public, at the personnel finance meeting in June, where we give an actual, what actually was spent out of that one. Yeah. So, for twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, our proposed millage rate is not gonna change. Uh, we basically, as we're, as a commission, you are charged with making appropriation for money needed for municipal purposes during the ensuing fiscal year, other city and provide for a levy of the amount necessary to be raised by taxes upon real and personal property for municipal purposes. Fond recommendations are presented for consideration. And again, these are what were originally authorized. These are the current, um, what we actually are asking to be levied. So this is the same as it was last year. What we've got also, what I want to also point out is, we had a six million dollar increase in taxable value this year. So we went up six percent. Um, so we don't have to adjust up the millage rates. And so what I, what people, or what I would want persons to know, the top two numbers are what stays in the city. So this is what we get our property taxes off of. These other ones, um, are funding, are funds that have, that are different. So like the pension fund, that money goes directly to the pension. Permanent public improvement that we talked, as we talked about earlier, is for purposes of purchasing and or building different permanent structures. We get the li, we get the library, um, millage, and then we give it to them. Yeah. Dineride is the same way. So all the one, two, three, four, five, the first six are levied in, in June. Dineride is the only one that's levied in the, in the winter taxes. So that's why your winter taxes are so much less, because all the heavy, uh, levying is done during the summer. But that also is kind of, and I'm trying to work with the state to find out if we can do it. What I would propose going forward is that we kind of split this up, to do it fifty-fifty. And the reason being is this, we get all of our money for operating in September, and that's it. After that, we gotta wait on state share revenue, we have to wait on things of that nature. If we split it, it would make it, say, if you have a thousand dollars, it would be five hundred in the summer, five hundred in the winter. But that would then give the city more from a cash flow standpoint, that going into January, February, the lean times of the year, we would then have more money to operate. So, working with the state to see what's necessary to adjust that. It, we would have to get that, and then we'd have to make the, the, the recommendation too, and have to be a vote, our state tax commission, all that good stuff. So we will get all that information to give to you, if there's, that's something we can do.
Split it though, once you have less money in the?
You still have your state share revenue and stuff that keeps coming in. But you won't, what we end up having is around this time of the year, it's like, cross your fingers that nothing bad happens. Because a lot of our monies from federal, um, agencies comes in October. So we'll get money, we'll have money, because we don't really, honestly, the money doesn't get really spent till after the beginning of the calendar year. When you start having, uh, activities from construction and things of that nature. So when you're doing that, it's kind of tough. So again, if it's a weighted one, where it may be seventy-five, twenty-five. Just something that, because the other thing that we get a lot of complaints about is that residents say, the taxes are so high in the summertime. How can we lessen them? And if we could break it down maybe, to see if we could spread it out a little bit, that's just something to look at, that's something to look at. So all total, the city levies twenty-five mills, but again, twenty of them stay here. The others go to those entities. And then also you have on there, you know, RISA, nine-one-one, um, the, uh, the school district, all that, these are ours, that are city, city levied. That are city entities, but like I said, we also levy the other, um, other millage rates for places that we're part of. The county, the state of Michigan, the school district, all of those though, show up on our, uh, tax bill, but we don't keep all of it.
That's, uh, for non-homestead, how many bills?
For non-homestead, it's forty, it's forty-six. For homestead, it's forty-four. Yeah, for homestead, you get a reduction, but for non-homestead, it's, it's at the full forty-six. We only levy a total, like I said, a total of about forty-seven mills, when we do all of them. Yeah. But I, I'll make sure and get, get that number to you, and I'm, I'm almost certain that's what it is. So that's the proposed millage, uh, for this year. The next thing is the twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen budget amendment. So by law, the city is required to make adjustments. Let's leave a body must amend the budget, uh, amendments to the improved budget, general appropriations act must not cause estimated total expenditures, including accrued deficit, to exceed total estimated revenues, including available surplus. Chief administrator officer may recommend, and the legislative body will approve any amendments to the general appropriations act required. That being said, we are asking to increase, that's the only problem I have, is that, not seeing that from here. This is where I need the lights off. Thank you. I'm gonna move over here. Alright. Yes ma'am. Testing, there we go. Okay, so what we're asking for are modifications in property tax on the revenue side. Property tax, grants, charges for services, rental and interest income, and other revenue. We're also asking on, on the expenditure side for adjustments in income tax administration, city clerk and elections, the finance department, the inspections department, general admin and aids to other governments. So, this is the reason why. So increase in property taxes of seventy-eight thousand, three hundred and sixty-eight dollars, due to less brownfield dollars being captured. So we, based on historical data, projected out that we would have, um, X amount of dollars, we were seventy-eight thousand dollars over. So that money will then go back into that line item to increase it, in the property tax. We're saying a reduction of twenty-two hundred and eighty-two thousand, seven hundred and seventy-nine dollars in grants, due to the total cost of the fire truck not being realized in fiscal year twenty nineteen. So what happened was, we got the truck, we ordered it, it's been paid for. The outfitting won't happen till next fiscal year, which will use the remainder of the grant. So we can't keep it in this year. The other part was, we did not use, we had money set aside through a grant for blight elimination that did not get done this year. So we can't keep it there, so we have to reduce that line item by that much. An increase of forty-two thousand, nine hundred and sixty dollars in charges for services, and that's due to medical marijuana application fees. When we put the budget together, we didn't know that we were gonna do medical marijuana. So our projections were forty-two thousand dollars short, due to that infusion of about a hundred and five thousand dollars from the medical marijuana, uh, applications. We're asking for an increase of ten thousand, nine hundred and eighty-eight dollars in rental and interest income for interest realized from the income tax account. That's the dollar amount we get interest on the money that we have deposited for the income tax. So now we know what that number is, and we can plug it in going forward. An increase of sixty-four thousand, one hundred and ninety-three dollars in other revenues, that's due to the boys and girls, we have a boys, what we call Boys and Girls Pass Through, where the Boys and Girls Club pays us, we then turn around and pay the county. So the money is a pass-through. We get five percent of what that money is for administration. This is about to go out again. For administration, and then the other thing was, we sold eleven-eleven Superior, which was something that we had not anticipated, but it happened. So we're asking for an increase of sixty-four thousand dollars, uh, in that line item. Testing, there we go. So those are the increase in the revenue side. So increases and decreases based on activities that either happened or did not happen. For the expenditure side, what we're asking is a reduction of ninety thousand, two hundred and fifty-five dollars in income tax administration, due to us only per, only having personnel in there for a part of the year, not the entire year. An increase of fifty-five thousand, six hundred and thirty-six dollars in finance department, due to increases in contracted services for the entire year. As I said, and we're gonna, we're gonna reduce, um, in the overall, uh, for the, the, it, the inspection department, the two hundred, three thousand, two hundred and fifty-three dollars, because we didn't use that money for the grant to do, um, the demolition for blight elimination. But then also, we had in there a full-time, uh, building official that left in September of last year. So that, while we had, uh, salaries and wages in there for him, we did not utilize them, so we're gonna move them out of that. We're increasing general admin, due to a higher pension contribution that we were required to pay for murders, and offset the Boys and Girls Club revenue. So that revenue we talked about increasing, we're gonna actually compensate for it in the expenses. And then an increase of four thousand, three hundred and eighty-nine dollars in aid to other governments, and that's for one month of Medic One payment. That we have, we paid to Medic One a subsidy for being a participant or owner of Medic One, to the tune of four thousand, three hundred and eighty-nine dollars, uh, every month. So we missed one month.
We get a copy of this.
Mm-hmm.
Now, the pension contribution, did we ever hear something from the state, you know, we had a letter or?
Regarding?
The pension, you know, what was it?
We got approved for the, the pension corrective action plan.
Oh, okay.
Um, that got approved. Our biggest issue right now, and I, I met with, uh, Mr. Mike Overly today, excuse me, is that the state, the state legislators, along with, uh, because MERS is the Michigan Employment Retirement System, what they're gonna be ready to do is they're going to lower the expected revenue, I mean, the, the, lower the expected investment return. So while we're, we're actually assuming seven point seven-five return on our investment, they're gonna lower that to seven point zero. What that means though, is that we have to pay the other three-quarters of a percent. But they're gonna try to smooth that by adjusting the wage, um, the wage structure, by increasing that, so the, the, the difference will be minimal, be minimalized, but we will see an increase in pension contributions across, and that's happening across the, the state of Michigan. Um, and where we are, and I talked to him today about, you know, how do we, the biggest drain on our pension contribution is not what has been done since two thousand thirteen. From what was done in two thousand thirteen, we're a hundred and twenty-nine percent funded. So the hybrid plan is great, we're in great shape. What is hurting us is that we only have twenty-three participants in the old defined benefit that's, that are paying toward the obligation of two million dollars a year. So what we have to do is, the city has to make up the difference, because there's ninety retirees and only twenty-three people paying for it. So we have, we as the, the entity that provided, that have to make up the difference. So that's why we're paying one point three, one point four million dollars a year. Because our defined benefit, uh, pension system is still, has, you know, got people in it. And until that's gone, um, we will have to continue to pay it. It is anticipated that that number, that the, the contribution will apex at about two point two million dollars in twenty thirty-nine. So that's the conversation we'll have at, at your committee. Because I want, I'm gonna have Mr. Overly actually come and explain where we are and what's going on. So that we can get the full picture of what's happening. Because we allocate, again, probably a third of our budget to pension payments. And I just got to notice that our healthcare is going up ten percent yesterday.
That's why you have to make amendments too.
You have to make amendments and you have to make adjustments. That's why these documents, like I said, budgeting is not an exact science. Because things change and you don't know, you get, you hope you get the information, but they may come in late. You've already approved your budget, so then you have to make adjustments during the year. That's where the amendments come in at the end of the year. So that's all part of this budgeting process. So as far as the budget hearing, that's it.
Quick question.
Yeah.
On that one twenty-four?
Uh-huh.
Okay, so sixty, what was it?
It was sixty-three thou, sixty-four, one ninety-three.
Quick question, was that, uh, what was that for the?
So that was a combination, that's a combination of two. So eleven-eleven Superior sold for twenty-nine thousand dollars. So that's roughly thirty-five thousand dollars that went to the Boys and Girls Club. Okay? So in, uh-oh, is it, there, nope, it's right here. So what we've got is the increase in pension and the thirty-five thousand dollars. So you're looking at about ninety thousand dollars roughly ballpark for increase in pension contribution that we had to pay. Yeah.
We will be getting amendments too.
Correct. You'll get, this will be in the amendment, so what's gonna happen is, the amendment will have its own, uh, own ordinance. The millage will have its own ordinance, the budget will have its own ordinance, with supporting documentation for each one of the three. Yeah.
Time-wise, uh, to get it all complete, because we gotta definitely have it done by, and submitted by, uh?
You have to pass it by June thirtieth.
June thirtieth.
Yep, yep. So here, here's the deal. It, it can go to the committee and the commission meeting Monday, it can. Um, worst-case scenario would be the seventeenth. Now, that's gonna be your choice. What would you prefer? Because the third is basically putting everything together, getting it in over the weekend, you look over it. Seventeenth gives you time to look what you have at, what you have now in front of you. Make any comments or concerns or questions, and then we move forward on the seventeenth. Okay, we get that, we can put that on the seventeenth, so that, for the vote, um, of the commission.
Alright.
Okay.
Mr. Hord? Thank you. I, the only burning question I have, and because I have no idea where, where this conversation is, is what is the bypass for the Boys and Girls Club, and what is the offset for the Boys and Girls Club? And why is this city involved with the Boys and Girls Club? I have no idea where this conversation is even.
Oh, okay. So here's what happened. The Boys and Girls Club has a, uh, when we were, we were in, we were kind of struggling for personnel. We were up at the Boys and Girls Club, we had a person up there. We had to pull that person out of there to be on the road, because we needed to fight crime and fires. So the Boys and Girls Club ended up going with, uh, the Sheriff's Department. The Sheriff's Department cannot enter into an agreement with a non-governmental entity, i.e. the Boys and Girls Club. So, what they asked us to do was to be a pass-through. So the agreement is like, the, the Berry County Sheriff's Department has an agreement with us. So the agreement is like, the, the, the Berry County Sheriff's Department has an agreement with us, that we pay them basically for what they do at the boys and girls club. And like I said, they pay us, not five, they pay us ten percent of what they pay them for the administration costs that we have to do. So that's the preparing of it, printing, I mean, getting the check and forwarding it to them. So they pay us, we record it, and then we pay out that money.
That sound like money laundering.
That's government, that's government one-on-one. That's what that is. Yeah.
Any more questions? Mr. Henry.
I have one that's not about this, it's one that I've just been dying to ask.
Personnel.
It's about the budget. If, if the city manager can explain to me and show me where the four twenty-five property is, and the loan is being paid off, we get money and there's a loan.
Which loan, Commissioner?
Four twenty-five property.
Yeah, in that document that I sent to you, that number, that four twenty-five agreement stuff, is in that document.
It is in there.
Yes ma'am, under the, under the property tax section of the general admin, you'll see, it'll say, it'll say four twenty-five agreement, you'll see it there.
That's the money to come in.
Correct, and then there's a correlating outflow that's in there as well. So what you have is revenue and expenditures, line by line, in there.
And so it'll show me where we're paying the, um?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Y'all good, city looking good, money-wise, revenue coming in?
We are, um, what I'm, and again, we, I'm getting ahead of myself, but, because I want to stick with this. But when we, when we have our conversation in Ju, in June at the personnel finance committee, giving this information relative to obligations that the city's gonna have to do and endure, and I think we need to have a better grasp on what we're doing and what's gonna have to happen from our side. Again, we are paying backwards for things that happen. I, I was just looking at today, um, like I said, the funding for hybrid is one twenty-nine. The funding for ASME is twenty-three percent. Funding for general non-union employees is right at about forty percent. And, no, I'm sorry, thirty percent, and the funding for police is at forty-four percent. We, that number is going to continue to grow, especially with the changes that are going on at, at capital, at the capital. But the other part about that is, you also know that there's a three hundred thousand dollar infusion that helps us offset that, that's gonna go away too. So we need, so there's gonna have to be literally some changes made. So I asked the, the gentleman today, can we flatten that? Can we make it so it's not as steep a climb? Yeah, but that extends it out another twenty-five years. So, that's what I'm saying, that's where we need to start having these conversations around, um, what needs to be done. When we start talking about infrastructure repair, I was at the income tax meeting, they're gonna present about the um sidewalks and alleys. Right now, if we do, the, the monies that we're getting, and I'm, like I said, I don't know what that final number's gonna be for income tax. But if that income tax money is utilized for streets, alleys, and sidewalks, the street, the alleys, to pave them, a million doll, well, a hundred thousand dollars is what they said, gets you nine hundred feet of asphalt.
It's, um, infrastructure to a thunder too.
If there's infrastructure under it, then we, then that adds to it. But it's just these little things going forward, that we have to look at as a community, and how we attack them. So that's where our personnel finance meeting will be headed, is those kind of conversations going forward. So, what we, what are we gonna do? That's really what, that's what I'm talking about. All right, so from a money standpoint, we're growing in taxable value, our, our properties are appreciating, we're holding fast with, with the things that we have, yeah. But it's just things that keep, you know, you, as you pay. Because like I said, when you start looking at it, as I said here, our budget overall is eight point one million, with grants and state share revenue and things of that nature. The bu, the pension is gonna get to two million, that's twenty-five percent of that. You don't know what utility's gonna do, you've got the, uh, you got AEP now going to the Michigan Public Service Commission to ask for a five percent increase in electric. Like I said, our healthcare is going up ten percent this year. And that's in such a flux, because what used to be the economy scales that government's got because they have so many employees, when you reduce your number of employees, the healthcare market is wicked. So, you don't know large group versus small group. If you go large group, you get one rate for family, single, and, and, and single plus one. If you get to a small group, they rate each individual person based on your family demographic. That's a lot more money. So, that's what I'm saying, the things that we're looking at going forward, um, how we attack them, and what's the plan of action?
The three hundred thousand dollars that's gonna eventually go away, and at the same time that the, uh?
They come back online, they come online from the standpoint of taxes. The taxes that we're anticipating is gonna increase about a hundred and eighty thousand dollars.
Pretty much a little over half of what the three hundred dollars.
Correct, correct, so you're gonna have a shortfall, about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. And like I said, if there's other entities that come online, it'll help offset that, but?
Around that time, really, there's some other entities that's looking to come back online.
The big, that's the big one, um, there are some other ones that are, some opers that will be coming to fruition, but they are about three years behind that. That one is the one that's like really close, it's about four years out. So like twenty twenty-three is when that one, I believe, has a sunset on it. And then they come on as full taxes, but then you also, like I said, you'll capture the increase in what they've had over the years on that, on that facility. True, that's always an option.
Just letting Commissioner uh Seagull to know that the raises was budgeted into this?
Correct. Yeah, that is in, that is in this document that you have, um, that will be presented to the commission for their approval. All right? Are there any other questions?
Let's close the public meeting now.
Yeah.
Hearing.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, that's it.
Thanks everybody for coming. This meeting is adjourned.